Good evening. Are we good? Thank you. So I'll call tonight's meeting to order. Please join me for the pledge.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, the wicked saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, good evening. Tonight, as you all know, Jerry Wilson of Peterborough resigned from the board, taking his place is Mr. Tom Burgess from Peterborough, who has already sworn in. Mr. Burgess, welcome to the Conval School Board. And although Jerry isn't here tonight, thank you to Jerry Wilson for his years of service to the students and the people of Conval. So, thank you, Jerry. All right. With that, we are on to points of pride. Superintendent?
Absolutely. So, we are really excited to let you know that eight of our classrooms at Antrim Elementary School received an upgrade this week with classroom amplification systems. Most research indicates that classroom amplification systems have a positive impact on students' levels of academic achievement and speech recognition, as well as listening abilities. At Pierce School, the Bennington Cadets came to Pierce to build a picnic table for the school. So, thank you very much for that. At Dublin Consolidated School, they had the Veterans Day Assembly. Mr. Dunning actually was the featured guest, and he spoke about the meaning of Veterans Day. Thank you, Dick. Francis Town Elementary School wrote letters to veterans for Veterans Day to show appreciation for their service to our country. They also shared personal stories about family members who are or were active in the military. HES welcomed an arts-in-residence person to work with all classrooms to create integrated art projects connected to the program of studies. And in Temple, they had a scary Halloween writing contest for the Menadnock Ledger. A fourth-grade TES student won third place for his story, "Demon Shark." Great Brook School will hold a canned food drive from the 15th to the 22nd, and there's a little friendly competition. The advisory which collects the most canned foods will have a special treat. And at the high school, two weeks ago, the class of 2024 officers, joined by other student staff and principal McKillop, spent time picking up litter along a two-mile portion of Route 202, stretching from the Conval Jug Handle, that's where you hit the light, north towards Hancock. The group collected 40 bags of trash. The cleanup was one of four littered collection dates that the class of 2024 has committed to through the New Hampshire Department of Transportation's Adopt a Highway Program. Conval Community Dollars for Scholars is running a shoe drive that will end November 17. All money raised for the fundraiser will help award scholarships to students who have faced life's challenges head-on. Four Conval students recently graduated from our LNA program and are moving on to take their LNA exams through the New Hampshire State Board of Nursing. So, excellent for them. And in case you did not get a chance to see this in the paper, Mackenzie Anderson made 240 saves in the field hockey net for the Cougars this year, stopping 85.7% of the shots on her. Mackenzie was selected to represent New Hampshire on the twin-state team, which faces the best seniors Vermont has to offer in the summer of 2022. Congratulations, Mackenzie, and those are our points of pride.
Thank you, Superintendent. With that, we have reached our first period of public comment for tonight's meeting. If there is any member of the public here tonight who would like to address the board, please raise your hand to be recognized by the chair. You will be provided a period of two minutes to address the board. Is there anyone that wishes to address the board tonight? All right. Hearing none, seeing none, there will be another public comment period at the end of the meeting. With that, the next thing on our agenda is the consent agenda. This is the acceptance of school board meeting minutes of November 2, 2021. There is a retirement notice. There are nominations noticed as well. There was a late addition that you have in your folder for that as well, and a parental leave of absence. So, those are your consent agenda. Any objection to any of the items in the consent agenda? Hearing none, seeing none, the consent agenda is adopted. With that, we are on to the superintendent's report and presentation of business reopening update. Superintendent?
So, we did receive our CLIA waiver. What that provides us the opportunity to do is symptomatic testing and pool testing for our students and our staff. So, we are meeting with the nursing nurses and principals tomorrow afternoon to have a discussion about what that would look like and how we would obtain parent permission. The goal, of course, is not to test students, really. The goal is to make sure that students are not being kept out of school for longer durations of time than is necessary. So, of course, we do not want sick children to come to school because we don't want students to, you know, we don't want things contagious, viruses, COVID or not, in school. But in this case, because of the guidelines around COVID and quarantining, this would allow us to differentiate that so that a student doesn't end up in a situation where they have a cold and they are out for an extended amount of time. And then any close contact, household close contact, is also out an extended amount of time. So, I'd happy to answer questions. The board had indicated they wanted us to start working in that direction. So, if that has changed, could you please let me know quickly?
Any questions for the superintendent? None? Great.
Can I just add one thing?
Of course.
This will also help relieve some pressure from the local pediatricians who have been doing a lot of that testing because that's where parents have been taking their children. So, just, you know, it's not, it's not just about us doing it as much as it is about making sure that, you know, some of our local pediatricians can go back to doing things like well, children visits and pieces like that. They've been doing a lot of testing for us.
Liz?
So, how, what's the timeline looking like, a guesstimate on when we can have this in schools?
Well, we, that's going to depend on our meeting tomorrow. Our hope would be that we would be up and running sometime right after, if not as soon as we got back from the Thanksgiving recess. It might take a day or two to get it up and running and get everyone's permissions in, but that would be the goal. So, sometime that week.
Dr. Cribble?
Do you have tests?
I do.
Good.
You can't see the broad smile on my face. Yes, we do. We were able to get those.
Any other questions on this? Thank you, Superintendent. Exactly what the board was looking for. Anything else?
No, I have, if you want to go. Nothing, nothing else on the reopening, but if you can take a look at your calendar as we are getting ready to break for Thanksgiving, I'm going to assume that there's nothing else you want to add next week.
There isn't. I'll remind, Dr. Ullman, you're going to be at the selectmen's meeting this Thursday, correct? So, you may be by yourself with them for the first. I'm just letting you know because the strategic planning meeting is likely not to be over by seven. That's all.
Yeah, based on what we have to get done. Yeah. Be in the vicinity. Anything else the last two days of November? If we could take the look at the first week in December? Okay, so then we have the 6th to the 10th. One of the things that we do need is a public hearing. As this has been discussed, we will need a public hearing for the use of trust funds. We would like to do that right before the board meeting on the 7th, unless. And the board meeting would immediately follow?
Okay. Rich? That was the original discussion, but then the feedback from the policy group was that then they couldn't do earlier than 6:00. And so, we're at 7:00. Hence, the, I shall wield the mighty gavel to move us through our discussions. But no, those will still be at 7:00. Do you, but that's, if you all want to meet on that and have that conversation again, the conversation when we had that last meeting was that before 6:00 didn't work. So, I would say right now it needs to stay at 7:00, but.
Okay?
Okay.
Anything else the week of the 13th? The week of the 20th? And then the week of the 27th? All right?
Are you all right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Reports, teachers representative. Please remember to push the button until it's green. Thank you.
It's green. Okay. Hi, Cheryl Jesse. I'm an occupational therapist in the school district and the vice president of the CVEA. And first off, I'd like to give a shout-out to the board's negotiations team for all the hard work they have done, along with our negotiations team. We've come to a lot of great agreements, and it's been fun, fun over the past few months, five or six months. And I'm not going to say I'm sad it's over, though. The staff across the district are working really hard amidst many, many absences of staff and students. I'm going to say it again, that the sub-s shortage is really affecting everyone at all levels. So, many teachers are using their planning time to fill in for staff that are out. And although we're very appreciative of that, everyone's exhausted, and everyone's looking forward to the Thanksgiving break. And I also just want to give one last shout-out to our nurses, as always, for working tirelessly each day with keeping the sick students, six students out of the building and, you know, helping the healthy ones to get back in. And I'm sure testing's going to help with that. So, we're excited about that for staff and students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Budget and property. Jim?
Tim, give us an update in the solar project. You probably all read the paper about it. The big concern right now is the progress has been slow. And hopefully, if the weather holds out, we'll make it. If the weather turns nasty, we could have an issue. But so far, so good. We spent most of the time talking about the fiscal year '23 budget. We updated the capital improvement plan, which is in your package. Just a highlight of that is this year, we have, when we met on December 6, the pack, the information in the package was, had not been updated. You do have the updated capital improvement plan in your package tonight. And just so you know, there was $492,000 of capital improvements included in the budget this year. It's about, that's a little less than 1%, and that's significantly higher than we've done in the last couple of years. So, that's, that's moving in the right direction. We've also updated the trust summary. That's in your package. That includes our new recommendations for both the Warren Articles, the funding, and also for, we discussed possibly new targets for each of the trust funds. So, we'll go over that in the budget discussion later. Catherine drafted, gave us the first draft of a capital improvement plan policy. We haven't really taken a look at it. We will discuss it in the next meeting, and the policy committee will take a cut at it, too. So, that's important to do because it's going to hopefully establish the fact that we want like a set of goals for like 1% of the budget for capital improvements or whatnot. It'd be harder to move off that if you have a policy that says that's what you're going to do. We also discussed several items that are going to require public hearings, and we, and tonight, I think we're going to talk about one. We have to waive a policy and a bidding requirement. We'll talk about that later. Okay? Busy meeting. Got a lot done. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Education Committee, Stephen Ullman.
We, we met yesterday, and universally, the attendees at the meeting noted how much more intellectually stimulating the air in Antrim is, as opposed to the other eight towns. We had circulated our agenda packet to all members of the school board. We examined disaggregated data from the New Hampshire statewide assessment system and the NWA. We're looking at subcategories of students. Another, we, we finally decided that since Dr. Forrest, New Hampshire's state assistant superintendent of the year, has the expertise, we would thought we were going to depend a little bit more on her insofar as reviewing policy. So, she's going to examine some of our concerns. Insofar as the data was examined, we had at least one case of a student who was receiving an A in her mathematics course while scoring quite a bit below proficiency, apparently, in one of the exams. Now, I personally have a few conclusions from, from the data that I'd like to share with you. We have an ongoing concern about math scores. Comparatively speaking, our students do much better on, on reading. We've had a five-year experience with the O-GAP, the mathematics materials, this assessment system. And thus far, we haven't seen a noticeable improvement in the, in the score. So, some, some concern was raised about just how effective these O-GAP materials are. I have detected a fifth-grade slump. That is, students who seem to do well, K through 4, have a little bit of a slump during the fifth grade, and we catch the results of that slump in the fall of the, of the sixth-grade test. On the New Hampshire statewide assessment system, about 47% of all of the Conval students who took the test were above 50%, the 50% percentile, versus the New Hampshire proficiency average of 52%. So, we're a little bit lower in reading proficiency when it comes to all of our students than is the case statewide. Once again, we found significant differences in what, in socioeconomic status. Our, our students who are on free and reduced lunches do quite a bit worse than our, than the category of all, all students. I won't, I won't go into any other conclusions, but I just want to say that the statewide data results often serve as a, a little bit of cold water splashed on our faces insofar as what, what the district is, is doing well. And I think we can, we can learn from weakness, as well as strength revealed in the, in the disaggregated data. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ullman. Next, policy. Janine?
So, we met tonight, and we have two new policies coming up for our first read on the agenda. JICD, Student Behavior Conduct, Discipline, and Due Process. There were some changes. We're looking to re-adopt with those changes. And IMC, Controversial Speakers and Programs. So, that's a first read. And then the second read, to which we didn't get any feedback, IGE, Parental Objections to Specific Course Material, DAF, Administration of Federal Grant Funds, and EEAE, Mandatory Drug and Alcohol Testing for School Bus Drivers and Contracted Carriers. Next, neck, at our next meeting, there'll be two new policies coming up for a first read. They're not new, they're not new policies, but they've been through extensive review. JRA, Student Records, Privacy, Family and Student Rights, and GBEF, Acceptable Use Policy for Staff.
Thank you, Janine. Okay, with that, on to old business, legislative update. The LSR languages are starting to come out and turned into draft bills. It's a, like a torrent of information. Again, 200 some-odd bills that will directly impact this district, either from an educational point of view, a financial point of view, or other operational perspectives that are included in those. Again, as they develop and as summaries become available, we'll keep you updated on those. A reminder that the NHSBA will also provide you a weekly, eventually, update on, on those as well. But there will be no shortage of legislative updates this year. I will try to have a little bit more of a rundown at our first meeting in December, based on some of that language. I will attempt to group them by topic, given how many of them there are. So, stay tuned. There'll be more on that coming out of the House. School Board requests.
So, we want to just, or I wanted to just check in regarding, to my knowledge, I have two outstanding school board requests. One regarding the EFA and one regarding school schedules. If there's anything else, could we, could you either send me an email or tell me now? Would be, would be nice. I, I think just, just for clarity, especially for Mr. Tom, because you're new, and I'll show you. School board requests are designed to ask the administration for specific information. We share, any information that's shared with one board member needs to be shared with all board members. So, that, that's the design of, of school board requests. Certainly, you can ask anything you want. I just might not be able to supply that information or get it done for you. For instance, if it's an agenda item or something like that, and it shouldn't be something. and it shouldn't be something, so for instance, it shouldn't be something, it should be information that you need. It shouldn't be a single board member directing the work of the administration. Only the board as a whole can do that. So that's a crash course.
And so I recognize as someone who was once new, I'm no longer allowed to say I'm new here. I know that these first meetings can be like literally drinking from a fire hose. So if at any point we say something that's completely over the edge in terms of your knowledge base on any of this, please raise your hand, and I will attempt to answer it or have that person answer it as best we can for you. So we do recognize that it's a lot to take in at once. Okay, with that, if there's no objection, I'm going to exercise some discretion of the chair to move the policy second reads first before we move into budget discussion, as I believe we'll need to go into non-public to have some of those conversations based on some of the stuff that's in there. So with that, the first policy up, is there any objection to that moving around on the agenda? Hearing none, seeing none. The first policy up for adoption would be IGE, Parental Objections to Specific Course Material.
I move that we accept policy IGE, Parental Objections to Specific Course Material as written.
Second. Move by Janine, second by Dick. Discussion. Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor of adopting policy IGE, Parental Objections to Specific Course Materials, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Hearing none, seeing none, IG is adopted. Next.
I move that we accept policy DAF, Administration of Federal Grant Funds as written.
Second.
Move by Janine, second by Mr. Dunning. Discussion. Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor of adopting policy DAF, Administration of Federal Grant Funds, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Abstentions. DAF is adopted.
I move that we accept policy EEAEA, Mandatory Drug and Alcohol Testing for School Bus Drivers and Contracted Carriers as written.
Second.
Move by Janine, second by Dick. Discussion. Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor of adopting policy EEAEA, Mandatory Drug and Alcohol Testing, School Bus Drivers and Contractual Carriers, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, did you have a, oh, you're raising hands? Sorry. Opposed? Nay. Abstentions. Policy EEAEA is adopted. Right. Yes, I know. That's next. Oh, thank you. Yep. Okay. With that, thank you very much. So the next item on our agenda is budget discussion. Based on the, the, the topics we have to discuss, I do think we're going to need to do some of this in non-public. We can then come out of non-public to make any motions you want to motion, but there are some discussions that we won't be able to have in public based on the items that are in, in there. So with that, I would entertain a motion to go into non-public for personnel. You have to.
Okay. I move that we go into non-public session under RSA 91 dash A, colon, three, comma, two, two, or comma, Roman numeral two for personnel and negotiations.
Second.
Move by Janine, second by Dick. Tim.
Janine.
Okay, we are now in non-public session. We will be back in a bit.
I move that we waive the minutes of the non-public session personnel for five years.
Motion to seal the minutes for personnel from the non-public session for a period of five years by Rich. Second by Kira, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Those are sealed.
I move that we seal the minutes of the student safety discussion for five years.
Move by Rich to seal the student safety discussion for five years. Second by Kira, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Both of those minutes are sealed.
And I move that we authorize the chair to sign the MOU with the CVEA.
Move by Rich to sign the MOA with the CVEA, second by Janine. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Three abstentions, Rich, Dick, and Kira. Motion passes, I will execute the agreement, collusion of the meeting. Thank you. All right, so, back to budget. Rich?
I move that we add $38,000 back into the budget for high school language.
Second. A move by Rich to add $38,000 back into the budget for high school language, second by Dick. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion approves, $38,000 back into the budget for high school language. Okay, back to the budget. So, the other items we have to discuss, as I understand it. I have the three different preschool options that, what? Go ahead.
Can I ask, can we, could we reserve that discussion till the December 7th meeting? Because we are, the preschool steering committee is going to do a presentation. Because there's like, most of the board-
Haven't had that discussion?
They had, no, they weren't here when we made that decision. They didn't hear like the genesis of the program. So, we would like to go back in and present, and present like the why and wherefore and the numbers again.
I'm sure, we can, I have no objection to holding the preschool discussion until then. Dr. Allman.
Jim, do we have any motion to, to specific concerning the acquisition of security cameras?
I do need a, no, that's later on in the agenda. Thank you. Sorry, all right, thanks. Yes. Yep. Here, go ahead, Jim.
We talked about reductions in the proposed budget, one of the things we talked about, what happened, that's what I voted on. It's moving equipment, or three, three pieces of equipment moving out of the budget into the equipment trust. The numbers that were presented in the budget book, the two different piece numbers, these, 117 is a good number, correct? To pull those up here and press something. Okay, so the numbers that came out of the budget moving to the trust, we had 117.5, 945, we agreed to go and do that. We would have to have a-
Public here.
When we get to the trust summary, you got a page, you got-
It's in here, yep.
Was there specific, can I just ask, what specific equipment were you moving out?
It's in there.
No, I'm sorry, it's on the next page. Thank you. Yep. Perfect.
Right, you should have them.
Yep, it's right here.
Yep.
Yep, yeah, it did, I apologize, please.
Yeah, that would be a motion that, that you could make, and we could do that. Totalling $117,000, 945. Move by Jim, second by Dr. Kribel. Additional discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Approved.
Next item, we talked about, we got the healthcare premiums.
So, what does the 145 represent in terms of percentages increase?
Where are we getting 145? You had 50.
I know I had 50, but your sheet says 145, so I assume that- Health use premium. Am I interpreting that correctly?
I think that was part of the special at the BMP meeting. The changes that were made in here, so.
Well, okay, we talked, we talked, at the budget property, we talked about why budget to 9.3%. And I thought we requested a, a number. And I thought this 145 was your number. So, we need to maybe touch base and figure out where we want, where we're on this. That's, you don't know.
So, the 9.3% increase actually, well, we actually have a decrease in our health line for next year. Based on our subscriptions, retirements. Over the years, we budgeted increases and actual experience decreases. So, our overall health cost in the presentation, it reduced this past year. Or, I mean, in the budget, it's reduced from last year. So, it's not a 9%, it's not a-
Even when we budgeted for an act of export.
It's a deduction, yes. Jim, I think the warrant, the warrant article is 50,000. It transfers out of 145.
Right.
So, I think that that's the number.
145.
Right, and the spreadsheet you had 50.
No, I changed it just now.
Okay.
Great.
So. Yes.
It was, it was far a discussion.
I, I, she got confused because I changed, the original spreadsheet you had had 50. I've already changed it to 145 after I saw her trust fund summary. Now, so, recommendation is that we take $145,000 out of the budget. And if we need it, pay for the health maintenance.
A health maintenance trust fund.
Right.
Because that's where the, that's what it's for, and that's where it is.
Right.
So, your proposal would be to move $145,000 out of the budget for that purpose.
And, that's, that's the motion.
That's the motion, second by Rich. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. So, $145,000 out, if we need it, it can go from the health-
So, the next item is just a space saver. Because when we get to the capital improvement, we could decide that we could want to move some of the 492 out of the capital trust, to trust. And I also got a space down below in case we want to put more into the budget. Okay, so, just leave that for later. The next item is the working down list, is a preschool option. We just talked about deferring that discussion. I chose to put the smaller one in the budget. So, the way this works, I've got an in or out. And if I hit, it's set up, if I just change the in or out, then it just does the math for me automatically, okay? High school science, we talked about that position. And I believe the consensus was to add it to the budget. So, I think we, I, I don't have the, the verbiage on the, somebody want to make the motion?
Yep, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yes. Good question. Janine, Kimberly?
The board was not here when we first opted to go. When we first opted for preschool, they don't know what the program is. And they need to understand.
Motion by Rich to add $85,000 for a high school science teacher. Second by Kira. Discussion. Dr. Kribel.
What's in that position in the budget that was presented?
No, it was, go ahead.
So, when we, what happens is I bring in the status quo budget. And here's, here's status quo, and then I say, this was the status quo budget. And here's what I mentioned.
And the discussion, I believe, was that this was, or that there would be a focus on the life sciences part of it?
Yeah.
Right? Yeah, no. No, it was not.
No, when I did this sheet, I did it intentionally to believe that Kimberly had presented this stuff to us, sort of possible reductions in the budget, or takeouts and footbacks. Think I did that right.
And so based on the stuff we do tonight, Jim will update that sheet, you'll get an updated sheet of what that status is, and, and we'll continue to go from there over the next few meetings. Okay, next, was the-
Did we vote on it?
Oh, sorry, we did not. I answered Greg's question, and then we did not. All in favor of adding the high school science teacher? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Eighty-five thousand dollars is added back in for the high school science teacher. Next, was the student information systems personnel that Mark presented to us on that.
And I thought the consensus on that Saturday morning was that we wanted to do it, so that's why I put in-
I believe that was also the consensus I heard as well. Rich?
I definitely think we need to do it. I want to express my concern about your ability to fill this position for eighty thousand dollars, including benefits.
I agree.
So what's, what do you think?
By which I mean, I don't think there's a chance in heck you're going to fill that position for eighty thousand dollars, including benefits.
Do you have a recommendation of how much you think it should be?
I, I would suggest that we, what do we, we budget? I would add twenty thousand to it. Yes, I mean, there's no sense of putting it in the budget if we're not going to be able to fill it, right?
Fair. Question? Oh wait, do you want to make the motion? Sure?
I, I move that we add a hundred thousand dollars for the student information systems person, up to a hundred thousand dollars for the student information system personnel.
Moved by Rich, second by Greg. Liz?
I just want to clarify, just jog my memory, this is the, this is different than the technology integration, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, is this the individual who we want to deal with data, is that, okay, perfect.
All of that stuff.
All right, perfect.
That's the power, remember the whole Power School discussion and all of that type of stuff, and modules, and, yep, that one. Additional questions, discussion? All in favor of the student information systems personnel up to a hundred thousand dollars, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Records show that Tom abstained? Uh, Dr. Kribl, Greg. Uh, thank you. Next, the next one on the list was the school resource officer, the consensus of the board, as I understood it was no. Uh, so if there's no motion to add it back in, it'll stay up. Rich?
There's not a motion, but we did discuss on Saturday an alternative, is there a alternative proposal yet?
There is not an alternative proposal yet, we are looking at our present staffing and how that works into a long-term plan.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, moving on. Elementary school integration. This was the one you were talking about.
Do we feel that this is extremely necessary, the technology integration for the elementary schools? Like, how much technology are they using other than a few programs in the classroom? And what are we looking at going forward? Are you wanting to increase the amount of technology that is used in these classrooms? Because that's also another investment as well, so I'm just looking for thoughts here.
Okay, so, um, we aren't looking to increase the amount of technology that students are, are using. These, the integration positions are really support positions, so to help teachers and others, other people who are working with students to leverage technology for student learning. So it's not to really teach students how to use the technology, it's what, how, how can we do this better? Or, or maybe, like, this doesn't need to, to be done with technology, so just, that's, that's what the position's designed for.
It just seems to me that if we're talking about a technology integration specialist, that maybe that money could be used better spent on actual educators where we're trying to cut people.
Dick, and then Dr. Allman?
Don't we have people right now who do that in the elementary schools? We have no person who does any integration. It's the only place it happens, it's the middle school and high school?
Yes.
So what is the role of the technology people in, that are assigned to these schools?
The technology staff at the elementary level are tech staff, they, they make sure the hardware's working, they make sure that there's no glitches with the software, but they're not working on integration or any kind of instructional, they're working on the tools, not the-
Right. But I thought originally that was part of their role, to help teachers.
Dr. Allman?
I too shared Dick's confusion. We expect one person to be responsible for integrating technology into the existing curricula at all eight elementary schools. This person will circulate among all eight.
So that would, that, that would be the model, that, we use that model for several other things as well across multiple elementary schools.
Well, multiple, but this is all eight, we're sending this person around grades K through four, and occasionally a five.
So I would just, yes, that's exactly what it'd have. I would remind the board that for the eleven buildings and all the technology infrastructure that goes along with it, we actually only have two, three, four, six people to manage all of that. So just, I, I understand Dick what you're saying, and there may have been a time when that would have been possible, but at this point, that is no longer possible.
Liz?
Just from what I see, and this is not the full picture, because I have kids in elementary school, and so what I see them using on technology, I know is different probably than all of the things they are exposed to in the class, and I will also say, I strongly support the use of technology when it is appropriate. But what I have seen and experienced with my own kids and how they are using technology in the classroom, these are not things that seem to me, and maybe this is just a generational thing, or because I'm comfortable with technology, but it doesn't seem to me that this needs to be a person holding people's hands, teaching them how to use a computer program when it's like an online resource, because my kids can get online and do that themselves once they have their password. Um, and I know there's other things that you guys are, you know, using in the background, so if you have other things that I'm not seeing, I would love clarity on that.
I, um, I think one, a main focus for the integrationists is, and we did a lot of this work at the middle and high school when we went one-to-one, is we had a focus on, we don't want kids just to be consumers where they're sitting, you know, with a, you know, with a program where they're, they're, I think, consumers. We want them to be creators, so starting to use technology to create, and that's, that's where we have, that's where the teachers don't always have the skillset to use technology that way. So you're right, we've got some programs that teachers can monitor and kids can get on at the elementary level, absolutely, but when we talk about leveraging technology to help kids create, be creative, communicate, critical thinking, that's a different skillset.
I hear you. So are you referring to things like STEM and, you know, at, at the elementary level, like, how that operates in the classroom, that kind of situation? That might be a little bit beyond? Because I know those things exist in, you know, in clubs and, and that kind of environment, and I really feel that it's important for kids to develop communication skills without technology. They have enough technology at home, too, so I agree with you, being creative, I just think that we really need to think about this position and how much value it will potentially add.
Dick first, then Rich.
I truly value the position, because I've seen how effective it can be in addressing curriculum instruction on fashion for teachers, not for our students, but teachers. My concern is, one person for eight elementary schools, how effective that's going to be? I'd be curious to see the plan that one person would use to address eight elementary schools, particularly when you have two larger elementary schools, that could probably benefit from a full, a full person between the two buildings. I, I could see a half time and a half time. Because to provide the instruction, you have to have time to do that with staff. The time to do that with staff is either when they're planning, which is an individual time, or during staff meetings where you have the captured audience, where you can provide some direct instruction. Or a time where the person will be in the classroom, working with the classroom teacher and the students. So this value there is just, how would it be implemented in eight small schools is my concern. I do see the value of it, I've seen how effective it is and how it can make a change. I realize that technology's changed dramatically from when we originally began, and there was a much more rudimentary kind of approach, which now is far more sophisticated. But if you're a classroom teacher, the time it takes for you to look at, what are the other tools that are out there that could help me be a more effective classroom teacher are pretty limited, because you have a full role to start with, an all-day role, and in some cases, a full-time role when you leave here and go home, particularly if you're a mother. Not against fathers, but mothers carry the burden more often, I'm sorry. So where does that-
Transfers the household.
... opportunity to do that research, to reach out there and find out whatever tools are there. An integrationist, that's their sole function. So, I support it, I just, I just need to see a picture of how this can happen in eight schools effectively. And if someone can share that with me, that I'd say, you know, we should do that. I'm not sure one is enough, if you want to know the truth.
Well, and I, you're hitting exactly on why it wasn't a number one or number two on our list. Because we think the position's important, we think teachers do need support using technology well in their classrooms. But the structure of our district with having eight elementary schools and the, it's gonna, the impact that position can have is not the same as if it was a full-time person dedicated to one school building, so. We see the value in the, in the position, but it was ranked lower when we brought it forward for that reason.
It comes back to the equity of the goals, and presenting in a school with three staff members or four, it's a lot different than presenting in a staff that may have fifteen or twenty staff members, and the effectiveness of that. So, it's the equity of the position and how we apply it across the district in eight elementary schools, and that's a concern I have, and it's the structure of the, of the district that makes it difficult. I'm really torn between, I see the value, and it's, it's probably a, a great start, but I'd really like to see how it's going to be implemented effectively to, to bring about that kind of challenge.
Thank you, Dick. Rich?
How many elementary school teachers do we have? Roughly?
That was actually in the, in the, in the proposal, do you want to grab? It's right there.
Can I guess and say eighty-five?
No, it's not, it's not that many.
It's not that many?
No.
Even, even better. So, it's, the reason I was going to say eighty-five is that's the cost of the position in thousands. So rather, what, what makes employing a full-time elementary school integrationist essentially forever, because it's a new position, better than a thousand dollars a year of additional professional development for the existing teachers?
Um, I think the on-demand support in the classroom to implement it. I mean, so that's the advantage of any PD, if you have standalone PD versus the ability to have support to implement something in the classroom as you're getting it up and, and going.
So that's, that leads back to Dick's point about how available is a person really going to be in, in eight buildings, and if it's, if it's sixty teachers, say, then that's, you know, three days, there's a hundred and eighty days in this, in this position. Three days a teacher is all you get? Fifty-three?
That's K, that's pre-K twelve, that's pre-K four.
Yeah, so a person in this position could do some staff PD and standalone PD, but, but yeah, the, the ability to work, it's challenging. I was in the role, that's right, the ability to work across schools gets challenging. And it compromises how effective you can be. Not that you can't be effective with some people, but you can't, you can't get to everybody within a school year well.
It's like a worry that it turns into the, you talked about the effectiveness of the middle school world language because of the staffing limitations essentially. So adding a ineffective program, maybe, or position might not be-
Do you think you have anything comparable from your mission?
Dr. Allman first, and then-
Tom, go ahead, Tom.
The, go ahead, Tom.
Do you think, you had mentioned you had some other, um, positions that worked for multiple elementary schools. Do you think you have anything that would be comparable to this position? Like I said, I compared, we said we already do, we already have some positions that work for multiple colleges.
So, I think what, what we're bumping up against, and, and to a certain extent, I believe that is Dick's point, is that we know that when we lose effectiveness and efficiency as people travel from building to building. Um, and that would be true of all of the positions that are itinerant.
Dr. Allman?
We're, we're all prisoners of our personal experiences, professional experiences. Let me illustrate how I am a prisoner of my past experience. If, for example, you were in a political science department and you decided that you wanted your teach, your students to learn a computerized method of doing content analysis of presidential speeches, for example, the best person to do that would be your fellow political scientist, rather than some outside technological expert who, who comes in. The same thing with learning new statistical packages to do national election analysis. So here is my suggestion, and this is what I'd do if I were king, the professional learning communities. If, if I were king, I'd take this eighty, this amount of money and divide it up in eights, and appoint someone within a, an elementary school to be the, the leader on integrating technology into the, the Hancock Elementary School curriculum. That's, that's what I'd do. I, I really have trouble with imagining this person wandering around to eight buildings. And, and I think the best integrator of new pedagogical techniques is your fellow instructor rather than someone from the outside.
Thank you, Dr. Allman. Any other discussion on this one? Greg?
So Kimberly and Ann, same thing at the hospital, call them subject matter experts. I mean, is that an option? I mean, is that an option to provide a step into a staff member to?
So let me?
Do this, I'm just, I'm just, I'm asking the question because I, I, I agree with everyone, what everyone has said here, and I think that is actually a much more intelligent use of finances and, you know, learn one, teach one, do one. I think that makes a lot more sense than hiring one person to go to eight spots. So if that is an option, then I could support that more than I could support this one person going from all over the world.
So I would reiterate Dr. Forrest's point that we, we put this low. Sometimes when we put something in and we know it's outside of the parameters of the recommendation of the two percent, we knew that this would hit. We always put all of our suggestions in rank order as they come from the administration. Again, I would remind you, this is the administration's budget, not Ann and I. But I would, I would just point out to you that even the cardiologist has somebody who comes into the operating room to help set the pacemaker. So while you may be a content area specialist, you may not completely understand all of the tools or even know about all of the tools at any given time that can help with pedagogy. Or in that case, your, your area specialist. So that is really what this position is about. The, the, I guess, the, the big takeaway here is giving the board the indication that this is something that we're probably going, you're probably going to see again. Is it an immediate need? Nope. Is it a long-term need? Absolutely. And, and while you're wrestling with eight elementary schools, it's probably something to keep in the back of your mind.
Dick?
Again, I want to come back to, I think, I think it's a valuable position. It is how we would utilize it that is my concern. I mean, logistically, I've been sitting here thinking about, how could you make this work? And logistically, that's how my mind works. Yes, there is a way. And the way to make it is when you have your captured audience, and your captured audience is staff meetings. And we have the technology to be able to present across a diverse population here very quickly. We did a lot of zooming. So it is possible, this person, to deliver information to multiple schools at one time. It's going to be the coordination of making sure that everybody's there to receive the information this person's going to bring forward. So it's a logistical issue. It's an important position. So yes, it's important. Yes, I think it makes a difference for kids, because it'll make a difference for teachers who'll be a lot more comfortable using technology tools that they don't even know about yet. But it's delivering it to them in a way that'll be effective. So I would support it. I think it can be done, but I think it needs to have a logistical mind around how to deliver it. And that, that can just be argued and thought out, but it is a valuable tool. I can assure you, my years at South Meadow School, one of the most valuable things we had at that time, it happened to be Peter Monther, was what he delivered to classroom teachers. Number one, he was a teacher. He was a respected teacher, and he had a grasp of technology. So having those skills, which is critical in this position, to bring those to a classroom teacher has an immense effect on how they change instruction. So again, it's about the delivery that I'm more concerned about.
Thank you, Dick. Rich?
We don't have a motion on this, do we?
Not have a motion on this yet at all. It is currently not in the budget. It would require a motion to put it in. Short of that, it doesn't go in.
I would move that we put the position in as presented. I'm looking at the number here.
Eighty-five thousand.
How much?
It is currently eighty-five thousand.
With a plan to support it, logistically.
Motion by Dick is to add in the eighty-five thousand dollars for a preschool, oh, sorry, an elementary school integration specialist. Second by Allen, additional discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor of adding in the eighty-five thousand dollars for the elementary school integration specialist, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
It's the opinion of the chair that the, is not approved. I think that's the end, because the others don't have numbers next to them. It was?
They're gonna, that would be part of the presentation on?
I, I don't think ever, it's protected, something that's there that.
Thank you, Jim. We did mention it. Yep. Rich?
So the presentation on the seventh, then, the question of how many buildings you add preschools to would seem to have a lot of relevance to what the transportation number would be. So how, you know, and to a certain extent, you're making a, a choice between spending money on adding additional classrooms or additional buildings or spending money on additional transportation to pull kids from further away into existing classrooms.
I don't think there was any discussion around?
You gotta push your button.
I don't think there was any discussion around transportation. Transportation isn't a part of the plan right now, is it, Ben? We don't have any transportation. And the classrooms are going into the same places they are now, Antram and Peterborough. Is that correct, Ben? In Greenfield? We're not, we're not taking them into new buildings.
The discussion on Saturday got into the discussion of if you, if we expand it and you can't access it, is it expanded? That was, I think that's where, that's why?
I see.
That's where that, that placeholder was there, because if you say, okay, I have two hundred slots, the question, I think, if I remember correctly, was what is our capacity and what are we at now? And why isn't that a hundred percent?
Okay.
If that's not at a hundred percent, because of transportation, is, is part of option one, option two, option three, is an alternative, option four.
Okay, so that?
That's why Jim had that in as a placeholder, because that was the discussion that we had on, at the workshop.
Okay, so the presentation will address that. But it doesn't involve transportation, but they, the presentation will address that. And I think also Carrie has mentioned that, and Ben has mentioned, that that is a possibility, that they're looking elsewhere for transportation. Is that correct, Ben? That might be a possibility that it will come from somewhere else? Yes.
Yeah.
Dr. Allman, and then Rich.
Well, if you're going to offer transportation, you have to put them on a school bus, I would guess. But preschool transportation often looks very different than, than regular transportation. So that's part of what Ben is referring to. There is a regional group who works, is looking at preschool and has some funding available. And one of the things that we are talking to them about is transportation. It, it, it happens.
That's why the seats are this high. Sorry, Rich?
I'm just gonna reiterate something that I, but also a few other people said on Saturday, which is I'd like to see the options, maybe it's an option four, but I'd like to see an option that expanded access as opposed to staffing level of allied health people at a... Because I, I have been here for the whole thing. I, I'm going to say, I don't think a, a presentation of, of these options, again, is likely to change my position on it. It's, I, I need more of a description of what an integrated program looks like that justifies.
That's exactly what we're, that's part of the presentation.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else, Jim? I believe we are for tonight, yep. Correct. 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 Sure, we can have that discussion, sure, since it's budget-related.
So we've updated the trust on summers. And you see, you got twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two school year, but target balance is eight at the end of the year. Then what Laurie's done is she's added in line items, the warrant articles has the budget property committee proposed them. We're recommending a million dollars here, a lot. I could vote on it tonight. And then the transfers out. Down the back sheet, right? So you can see that the balance, what the balance would be, the target balance, you change some of the numbers to target balance. Special education?
Jim, I'm sorry, could you please put your mic on? We're getting text messages from the audience at home.
Oh, I'm sorry. So we're gonna, we're gonna need to vote on the warrant articles, right? And this is just a placeholder or rec, budget property recommendation. We're not going to vote on it tonight. But one thing we did do is we did make some changes to the target balance. And the target balance for special education would be five hundred thousand. And you can see, if we don't spend any money, we'd be over the, over the target balance. Building capital reserve, the target balance is a million, and we have a million six, but we've got a lot of stuff we have to do that we haven't talked about. We probably need to talk about that at some point in time. What's in the, what's in the capital improvement plan? Athletics co-curricular, we decided, we said two hundred thousand should be enough for that. So that's why we don't have any recommendation, put money in. Health maintenance, three hundred, and that's where the one forty-five came from, I think. Right? So if we took one forty, if we needed one forty-five out for, because the rate was higher, the more budgeting, then we, we would be at our target. If we don't, we'd be above our target. Equipment, a hundred fifty thousand. Energy project and efficiency fund, we didn't, did you? Six fifty was six fifty the target number for the buyout? We were going to double-check that. It was six fifty? So you, so you updated that number?
I haven't made any changes.
Okay. So we need to, we need to double-check on what the buyout number is. I think we recalled it to be around six fifty. So we'd be recommending add a hundred thousand dollars basically so that over five years, next five years, we could get up to the, the buyout number. And then we talked about adding a new technology program. And the target balance would be two fifty, and we put a hundred, recommend we put a hundred in the first year. So the other thing you probably want to take a look at is the capital improvement plan, which is on the, oh, is it sorted, guys? This is all, okay, it's all by year? You've sorted it by year. Okay. Yep. Okay, so the details of what, you can, you can see at the bottom of the first page for fiscal year 2023, go right to the bottom, almost to the bottom. The budget is four hundred ninety-two thousand, and we talk about spending six hundred thirteen thousand out of the trust fund. And then down below that is how this, the six thirteen is, is divided. But look at next, look at the next couple of years and how big the numbers are. Parking lots was a big discussion. What do we do with the parking lots? Million five sixty-two. So this, if we fund it with a trust, if we fund it with a trust fund, we don't have to put it in the budget this year. But if we want to do something, especially warrant article on the parking lots? So I don't think we're prepared to have a discussion tonight, but these are the things we do need to talk about. And I think all the details are now in front of you, what it will cost to do all these things. Tim, do you want to add anything to, to these, what you're doing, what we're not doing? We do have fiscal twenty-three, and look at the wrong year and wonder. So we'll, we'll update this, and when we post it on the budget and property website, we'll, we'll make sure it's sorted by year, so it's easier to see all the 2023 together. Okay?
Thank you, Jim. Good work. Rich?
What did the track overlay cost?
Pardon?
The track overlay?
Oh, yeah.
What did that cost?
Do you remember off the top of your head, with the track overlay? We can get that for you for next time.
Twenty-seven thousand.
So that's a hundred and thirty-five thousand every five years we know we're going to spend. So it is, the two hundred thousand as the target balance in that, in that trust adequate, given that? I mean, I, I think it's true, and Tim Seer, can I ask him? I think it's true, Tim, that part of the reason we ended up having to replace the entire track is that we hadn't been recoding it on its recommended schedule in decades prior. Is that?
Right. There was equipment that was driven across it. The routine maintenance wasn't done. We were able to take the five-year maintenance and stretch it to year seven because of the way, the behaviors of the way we treated the track when it was redone. So I suspect it will continue in seventy-seven years, having to do an overlay.
So what year, what year would we need to, to do that again, then, Tim? And we also didn't have a track season for one of those years, right? So if we need to, and you said it's a hundred fifty thousand, round numbers?
No, the, the repo was twenty-seven thousand, I believe.
I certainly remember twenty-seven, twenty-eight, for sure, when we had the discussion.
Every five to six years.
The whole project we did, though, was, was what, two fifty, two sixty? When they, we did the whole thing?
So it won't be that. It'll be the twenty-seven, it'll be the twenty, it'll be thirty grand every, every?
But it's pick your poison. Either recode it every five or six years, or ten, fifteen years from now, be prepared to spend.
That's right.
All right.
Yep, correct.
So we'll, we'll add that, we'll add to the plan, but I think to your point, I don't think we necessarily need our targets. I mean, the targets, targets don't need to vote, so just, what, what need, what we need to vote on is what we put in the fund. Targets there for consideration. So if you see something you don't like about the targets, then we'll, we'll talk about it one of these meetings, okay? Maybe December seventh?
Yeah.
Talk about the expenditure plan, though, for this year?
Sure.
That's budget, right?
Yep, that's budget.
The CVHS replacement equipment and uniforms. The twenty-one, twenty-two expenditure plan? Twenty-one, twenty-two expenditure plan?
It says athletics, yeah, they're not numbered, but it says, uh, CV, CVHS replacement equipment and uniforms.
So I?
Thirty-two, one hundred.
Right, and I'm wondering why uniforms in particular wouldn't be in the budget?
That's a good question.
Doesn't feel very capital expenditure-ish to me.
This is for this year.
Right. He's asking why, why would uniforms not be in the actual budget? Oh, sorry, Laurie, go ahead.
So I believe that that was a discussion during the budget session. There were things that we shifted out of the budget to trust to cover, and I believe those, that was one of those items that was specifically excluded from the trust, I mean, from the budget, because we had funds available in the trust. Just as we shifted out some healthcare, we shifted out? No, no, it's for this year's budget school year that we're in now, so last year. Yeah. Last year, there were several items that we specifically were directed to remove from the budget to put through the trust if we needed to.
Okay. Thanks.
And you can see, we've added the, under building capital reserve, we got a placeholder for the LED plan for the little schools. I asked him if he could have a number for tonight, and he said no.
Good job, Tim. That was the right answer to tell Jim.
So for the new board members, we're trying to, we're trying to keep track of all the things we need to do and make, and keep track of the? So for the new board members, we're trying to, we're trying to keep track of all the things we need to do and make, and keep track of the trust funds, and I think that's, these two, these two tools do it for us. So.
All right. Thank you, Jim. Thank you all. Anything else on budget or trust before we move on to the next part of the agenda? Great work. Okay. Uh, with that, uh, next up, our first read policies. Uh, there's no action you need to take tonight on these. There are two first reads. Policy IMC, controversial speakers and programs, and policy JICD, student behavior, conduct, discipline, and due process. If you have comments or questions on those, please get those to Catherine Heck with a copy to Janine for the policy committee to consider. Uh, next, uh, Dr. Alman, please don't speak yet, um, or make the motion. Um, the, the, we need to waive policy DJE bidding requirements for a transaction. Anyone?
I move that we waive policy DJE on bidding requirements for the.
Discuss.
For the, um, what was it again?
For the discussed item.
For the discussed item.
Second.
Move by Janine, second by Dick. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? It's the opinion of the chair, that that is a two-thirds, uh, uh. Majority, and it passes. Uh, next, the expenditure and encumbrance report. Lori?
Okay, it was included, it was provided, I guess it wasn't included in the original packet, it was provided on Monday, um, with explanations, um, I don't know if we have any questions.
I move that we, uh. Accept the expenditure and encumbrance report and adopt any encumbrances contained therein.
Motion by Rich, second by Janine. Any discussion? Questions? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor of approving the, um, expenditure and encumbrance report and approving any encumbrances therein, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Want abstention? Uh, the motion carries. Now with that, budget transfers. Lori?
All right, during the budget process, we have placeholders for new positions or a variety of things, um, you know, contractual obligations, um, in our CVA agreement, we estimate, uh, what those are going to cost. Um, and we do it through district line items if it doesn't, um, if it's not tied to a specific building, such as. The science position that we just added into the budget for the high school, that placeholder can go to the high school for a science subject matter. Um, but these, there's other, there's several items that we do at a district level because it's not easy to ascertain during budget season which building it will impact directly. So all of these transfer requests are to shift those placeholders to the appropriate account based on actual activity for the year.
Rich?
I move that we approve the budget transfers as detailed in the document.
Second.
Move by Rich, second by Tom. Uh, discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstained. Tom, thank you. Uh, motion approved. Budget transfers are approved. Uh, next, we have, um, accept a gift or donation. We have two tonight. Uh, the first is South Meadow School requests authorization to accept from the Donors Choose Brick Q Motion Prime Set evaluated at six hundred thirty-three dollars for the purpose of using with the sixth grade to implement an engineering unit.
I move that we accept the gift from Donors Choose for South Meadow School for the amount of six hundred and thirty-three dollars, um, with gratitude.
Second.
Move by Janine, second by Dick. All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? The next is Temple Elementary School requests the authorization to accept from the Temple two hundred and fiftieth anniversary fund fifteen hundred dollars for the purpose of helping to purchase snowshoes for the school. Liz?
I move that we accept the gift. Of this donation for Temple Elementary School, snowshoes in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars.
Second.
Move by Liz, second by Dick. All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Thank you very much for the donations. Uh, next. Antrum, atrium roofs, South Meadow School, Greatbrook School. I did the same thing. I really wanted to say Antrum instead of atrium.
So Tim's going to. Talk to you about the atrium roofs at both South Meadow and Greatbrook.
So we have, uh, four roofs, I'll call them eight, we'll use them atrium roofs. Uh, three roofs here at South Meadow School, and we have one at Greatbrook Middle School. Uh, about four years ago, we put on our radar that these roof, uh, roof skins needed to be replaced. The roofs themselves, or the structure of the atrium is specific to a manufacturer. Ours is specific to a company called Calwall. It's Calwall's engineered rafters, their structural steel, it's their, uh, translucent panels, it's their system. So we got ahold of their sales guy and said, hey, you know, what do you think? Look at the roofs, you know, I know we're coming up on thirty years of these roofs, um, what do you think? And he said, well, I think you're running on borrowed time, because these are good for twenty-five to thirty years. He said, but you're actually, your roofs look in pretty good shape. They're essentially fiberglass. Uh, when they start to degrade, you'll start to see fiberglass will start to raise, and you'll get these little, you know, you'll get a, a really rough surface. At the time, three years ago, when he looked at the roofs, he didn't think they looked bad. So he gave us some pricing, we put it in the capital budget, and away we went. Went up there last year, still didn't look bad. We went up about six months ago, and the comparative, the comparative degradation versus time, there's no comparison whatsoever. They have gone. They're in a, a, we're in a mode now where they need to be replaced. Uh, we called up the salespeople from Calwall, the guy came right out, gave us updated pricing, um, and like everything else, uh, the components are. Months out from manufacturing, um, but he highly suggested that we, if we're gonna get on the queue for first thing in the spring, we need to sign up for some paperwork now and, and get on the list. Uh, which we need to desperately. So, um, uh, the, the pricing for both of these roofs. Um, for Greatbrook School, it's a hundred and one thousand three hundred dollars. And for South Meadow, which has three of these large structures, it's five hundred and five thousand four hundred dollars. It sounds like an awful lot of money, which it is, um, but in talking with John Jordan, who was the, uh, uh, the engineer that designed these schools. It's actually relatively inexpensive, uh, structure per square foot. It's about fifty-five dollars a square foot. Um, if we were to get an engineer involved and some structural folks and try to reframe, recreate these roofs, uh, just go over them, do whatever. Uh, we would be much more than fifty-five dollars a square foot. So this would end up being our least expensive, uh, means out of it. Uh, what it would provide us, the end result is, these are supposed to be translucent panels, ours are, um, essentially. Cream and brown now. Uh, they're not what they were designed to be clearly. Um, it's like looking through a smoke-filled lens. Uh, when they're replaced, it'll be a much brighter, uh, environment. Uh, there isn't our value to these panels. Uh, so, uh, newer panel would have a higher R value, so there would be some energy savings as well. Uh, regardless, we need to. Move forward. Um, we're signing some documentation and getting these guys on the schedule and expediting the, uh, capital improvement plan. With this, with these items on it.
Hold on. Jim, and then Rich?
Uh, permission to sign, uh, documentation with Structures Unlimited to get it, get it on us, get, get this project on their schedule.
Sure sounds like it to me.
Yeah.
We will need a public hearing for the capital to spend the capital dollars from the trust.
Uh, yeah, I would think so.
It would be best practice, yes.
And then we can add it to the public hearing? On the seventh. Rich?
So, um. We think in the next several years, we're gonna entirely renovate both middle schools, right? And I'm just wondering. No disrespect to the designer, but that atrium at SMS never seemed to me to be the most efficient possible use of that space, that amount of space. And the atrium at Greatbrook is actually the art room, at least it was the last time I was in there. So it's not actually an atrium anymore at all, it's walled off. And if we replace them with a roof, uh, well, it might cost more. This time, at some point, we're gonna. Is, is re-roofing cheaper than continuing to replace these panels? I, I guess what I'm wondering is, if it weren't for the fact that these things are degrading now, would this be something that we're actually interested in doing, or are we pushed into this?
The, the functionality of the roof, and I, I mean, it is a, the. I, I can't explain as to why they were done the way they were. I'm assuming, obviously, they wanted natural light in the middle of the facility. Um, I will agree one hundred percent with your thought that they're probably the most underutilized, you know, square footages we have in the building. If it had a flat roof over it with, you know, typical rubber roof, would it get used more? Could it be used more? I don't think so, just from the design. Of the outside, of the internal walls of the, of the atrium, and, you know, the spaces and the classes that dump into them, but, um, regardless, I. I need to do something with the roof panels at all, and I, I know it's kind of another one of these sole source type things, but it's their system. I've got no other option around it. I can't. Call up Bradco and say, hey, can you put skins on a system that's designed by Calwall? It's, it's their engineering, it's.
Do we have to waive sole source on this?
I would.
Do we need that as a vote?
Why, you're, you're not there yet, because you don't even have the money on the table to have him, but yeah, that's, I think that's where you'll end up.
Yep.
I know that there's nothing you could do about this, but are we gonna make it through the winter?
Let's hope. Um, I would think from. A fiberglass standpoint, it, it's gonna continue to get brittle. It could crack. Once it cracks, then we're gonna get leaks. Uh, we, right now, do not have any leaks on the roof. Um, uh, it still sheds quite a bit of snow when we do get snow, and it piles up at the bottom. Maybe a situation when, as snow slides off of it, I may have to shovel it away from the bottom of it, just so it doesn't pile up and create undue weight. On those bottom panels, because it slides down onto a flat roof, so. We'll all, we'll see as the weather happens.
Additional questions? So what else do you need from us tonight? We'll have to put it on a public hearing to spend that kind of cash, so.
Yeah, just the ability to move forward.
Yeah, I don't think we can do that until after we have the public hearing and commit to the money, so. That'll be December seventh or after that time, I think.
December seventh.
Right. Yep. Rich?
And while I, while I hate weaving our bidding policy, I don't think we actually need to here. The, the feasibility language, it's in that policy, is specifically for things that are only available from one place. Uh, like textbooks of a particular publisher, I would think this.
Thank you, Rich. Dick?
I just want to follow up with, with, uh, Rich's concern is, if we're going to. Do renovations in these buildings, to spend. Five hundred thousand dollars on the middle school, and then to renovate the buildings. I guess, I guess I'm concerned about that. At the same time, I realize that the space itself. Does not lend itself well to instructional space. And I'm not sure even putting a flat roof on it, that it would lend itself to instructional space. Uh, it would probably provide some great storage, um, which you can always use, so. Even though I know renovations down the road, it probably, at this point, is the only choice we have. Because even renovations down the road could be four or five years out. We, we never know what that's gonna look like, because you're gonna have to bond that, so. Um, though I have reservations, I, I wish there was another choice, but I don't see it.
Thank you, Dick. Anything else for Tim on this one? Nope. Okay, thank you, Tim. Uh, okay, Kimberly?
So, um, before you guys go into, um. Public comment, a couple of items that the administration just needs some direction on. The first is, um, you may or may not be aware that there is a toner shortage. Um, and so we are going to be asking you to accept your board packets, um, in electronic format. So if you need them in, if you absolutely must have them, um, in hard copy, please let us know, but if you can, please forego. Your packets, that'd be great. Um, and then finally, um, as you may have noticed today, it snowed a little. Um, so we are looking at, um, eventually, maybe not, but usually, a snow day or two in the schedule. Um, what I am looking for direction on is, right now. There is, um, a feeling that, you know, students have done a lot of remote work over the last six months, two, or last year. Um, and that maybe we should go for two or three snow days and reexamine. And, and look at where we are in the calendar before we say, nope, we're gonna use this snow day, um, it's gonna be done remotely and count as a school day, so. If there, you know, you want to give me a, a different direction, I'm happy to do that, but right now, I would say that maybe after the second day, second snow day, we reexamine. Where we are in the calendar, certainly if it's March, it's different than if it's December. Um, and, and make some decisions accordingly.
Dr. Alman?
Did the Commissioner of Education at one point say you cannot, uh, avoid taking a snow day by doing remote instruction?
Um, no, that. The intent, what the Commissioner has done, has said you can't do remote, um, and close for COVID. Um, as of right now, I don't believe the intent is to change the use of remote or Blizzard bag days, um, in place of snow days. Certainly, I'm sure he will let me know if it's otherwise.
Very communicative with you.
Yes, he is.
Rich?
So we're talking about a proposed regulation that's in public comment and period, and the proposed regulation specifically calls out inclement weather as a time when you can use.
Correct.
Remote instruction.
Not global pandemic.
I'm all in favor of it, I, I wonder even if it should be more than.
More than two days. It, it's been a very hard year for a lot of, or very hard year and a half for a lot of. Teachers and students, and we do have the flexibility of using hours.
Yep, and I always come to you usually at the end and say, can we just not do these two days, or? Do you have, I mean, if the board has a suggestion on how many days they'd like me to go before we reconsider it, or if we, you just want me to do, use traditional snow days, it's fine to.
We have a major Blizzard. That's a couple of days, which happens.
Yep.
Pretty frequently. I, I think that teachers and students would like to know that the next event will also be actual snow days.
Instead of days? You say events for now?
Sure, you want to do like five events?
Couple of events.
I just, I've always argued in favor of more days and not using the hours.
I know, I know.
But, um, it's been so hard for so many people.
But, um, it's been so hard for so many people.
So I'm happy to do it that way too. I can do five events and we'll reconsider after five events.
Any objection? Dick?
I'd be more comfortable with two or three events than making a decision in a whole week. I guess part of looking at is what is in the media calendar? What's the maximum rate? How many days would you have there that we could use to make up snow days that would end us at an appropriate point on a Friday or a Thursday? So if we work a calendar around that, if I were Charlie World, I would have as few snow days as possible for the end of the year to make up. So do we get these kids out of school at the end of the year? I think that's the best of them. Maybe more best, the best for the teachers.
Not so much for the kids, but so.
So, um, unfortunately this year, just because sometimes this happens, our calendar goes to a Thursday. So, so it's not the best year to, year. So I'm already up against it on, because usually I, I take to, I take us to that Friday and say, um, so, you know. I, I'm going to work on it. You, y'all know I worked on it as much as I can, but, you know, it doesn't always work in my favor. So, um, I'll do.
Liz?
I just have a question about, I, I'm go for the snow days, all for it. Just have a question about the remote learning and how many hours constitutes like an official remote learning day? Like when the kids are home. Is it like a full eight to three, eight thirty-three?
So, um, we have different schedules for different levels. And, and so that's how we, we manage. It's usually based not necessarily on the number of hours, but on the work.
Right, right.
These are the things that need to get completed.
Right. I know a lot of districts do Blizzard bags and things like that. So I'm just curious. Thank you.
Yep.
So three, I think was the consensus?
Three events versus three days.
Correct.
Got it.
Let's hope they're not events.
Teachers will be relieved.
Public comment. Hearing none, seeing none since I only, unless, I think, Tim, you're welcome to, Ben, you're welcome to. Oh, good. Okay, great. Uh, so there being no one else from the public here tonight, uh, we will move past public comment to the approval of manifests.
Right. I certify that the manifests totaling $2,278,488.69 have been reviewed by me and found to be proper charges against Kentucky Valley School District for goods and/or services received and have been properly processed prior to their submittal to the school board.
I move we accept the manifest as presented.
Moved by Dick, second by Jim. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries? Pay the bills. Uh, no more non-public? With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Dick, second by Greg. All in favor? Meeting's adjourned.